Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for Thursday, April 27th, 2023, the budget workshops. Please rise for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the roll. Do you want to call it?
Yes.
It's in front of you.
Ellenson is here. Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein. Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry. And Chairman Savoni.
I'm here.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right. I'm just going to go through the roll of the departments we have tonight, just to see to see which departments are here. The department's here, who has questions? Does anybody have questions for police? Wow. Police gets to skate. I don't think -- yeah, don't run too fast. Animal Control? I have a question for Animal Control. Questions for Fire? We have questions for Fire, please stay. Civil Preparedness? No questions about civil preparedness? Public Works, have a good evening. Yep, don't trip. The engineering department can skate, too. Questions regarding -- well, don't go yet. Cap'n Nonrecurring? We have a question for Cap'n Nonrecurring. Do you need to grab Rob?
I could unless you guys know what -- we split the projects, so could be.
Why don't you grab him? With my apologies for being presumptuous.
That's probably the only question I would think of either of them answering.
Okay. Questions regarding the six-year capital budget? None. Questions regarding the Conservation Commission? None. Oh, Inland Wetlands, sorry, Inland Wetlands. Yep, no, see ya. Planning and zoning, questions? No questions about cho -- oh, planning and zoning, no. You're all -- ZBA, questions? None. I think Mr. Pugini, you're all set. Questions regarding the Building Department? You're all set. Your first budget, and you're just walking out of here.
Out of line.
Okay. Clearly, you're not offended. All right. Mitch, can we have Animal Control come up? If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, Mitch Gibbs, Animal Control Officer.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around and humoring me. Just want to know about the state of your building, the condition of repair. We had some violations a year ago or so, and if you could just bring us up to speed.
Yes, so we had an inspection back in December, and we passed. You know, all the issues were fixed with the floors. We've had the air conditioning installed and the upgrade for the heating system, and that's been running fine. So, you know, everything that -- all the major stuff has been taken care of, and now we just address the little minor things that pop up. So, we're in a good state.
Hot water, insect screens?
Yes.
All that stuff?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Glad to hear it. Thank you. You do yeoman's work for an abandoned population, and I'm grateful for that.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? There being none, congratulations on your first budget.
Thank you.
Fire.
Joe Satnar, Fire Chief.
Deputy Fire Chief Sam Wilson.
Deputy Fire Chief Mike Shaw.
Thank you. Do you want to give a summary, or do you want to go right to the grilling?
Certainly. If you allow me, I'd like to give a brief overview of the budget and operations for the past year.
Thank you.
We, as your Fire Chiefs and Emergency Services Administrators, take this job very seriously as we take into consideration the needs of the community and the expectation of emergency services delivery here in Wallingford, while balancing it with what the town can afford and was willing to pay. I'd like to preface the 2324 budget request with the overview of the past year's operational summary. Call volume. The department has continued to experience an unprecedented increase in emergency call volume for the second year in a row, a 12% increase in 2021, followed by 11.5% increase in 2022. That's a 25% increase from 2020, going from 6,306 emergency calls in 2020 to 7,885 emergency responses last year. Early indications this year indicate this trend is going to continue with call volume increasing. We're attempting to manage simultaneous overlapping emergency calls where we're routinely handling and operating on three, four, five, even six calls deep. This is a continuous challenge for our fire officers and their continually rise to the challenge managing our department's resources effectively. Implementation of RSI. Last year, we had rapid sequence intubation. This is a new lifesaving procedure that we implemented last year after several months of planning and training in conjunction with our medical control physician. The Wallingford Fire Department is one of only a handful agencies statewide that is able to perform this procedure in the field, and we believe that we may be the only fire department-based EMS agency in the state that provides this lifesaving intervention. In the past year, the Wallingford has had better outcomes. Without this intervention, the patient would not have had a chance of having a successful airway established. COVID, I do want to mention about COVID. The last three years, these people have been on the front lines of the pandemic. They've been thoroughly challenged by the COVID-19 and its variants and subvariants, and this will have a long-term impact on our workforce, both physically and emotionally. Many of our members have contracted the virus during this period. This has created a burden on our budget, as well as our struggle to recruit new members and staff all of our apparatus. The Fire Department members have been courageously on the front line throughout this pandemic, and they continue to come to work bravely and serve the community every day. I want to touch on EMS staffing and ambulance shortages. EMS providers in the state of Connecticut have been experiencing EMS and ambulance staffing shortages at a level that's unprecedented. This decline with individuals entering EMS fields started long before the pandemic. Social and economic factors that were compounded by the COVID-19 pandemic have created difficulties in recruiting qualified EMS employees to fill positions. More specifically, firefighter paramedics and EMTs have staffed transport ambulances statewide. Regionally, this translates into increasing longer ambulance wait times for transport to the hospitals and decreasing likelihood of receiving advanced life support intervention by paramedics. Fortunately, the Wallingford Fire Department is the provider of ambulance transport service in our community, and we have been able to continue to provide excellent service. However, it's become more routine to run out of ambulances and rely on mutual aid ambulances to provide additional service during times of high call volume. This past year, mutual aid ambulances responded to 911-initiated incidents in Wallingford over 1,600 times for transports. As your Fire and Emergency Services Administrators, we're actively engaged in working to overcome these issues here in Wallingford. Additional staffing request. In this year's proposed budget, we have included a request for four more firefighter positions. This is directly related to addressing dramatic increase in emergency call volume. The rise in call volume is a contributing factor in the increase of department personnel fatigue and injuries. Currently, I have four people out on injuries. That results in higher overtime costs to fill the vacant positions in order to maintain minimum department staffing requirements. Additional firefighters will strengthen each platoon from 14 to 15. This is going to provide us with new opportunities in respect to operational flexibility, work to reduce injuries, and stabilize the overtime budget. Recruitment of talent. We're continuous -- we continue to aggressively recruit new firefighter paramedics and EMT candidates to fill open positions. This has been a challenge due to severe shortage of individuals that want to enter the jobs in emergency services field. The Volunteer Division. We continue to actively support first responders in the Volunteer Division with a dedicated salt cost center for initial training and support for ongoing and advanced training opportunities at no cost to the volunteer candidate. There is also an annual capital funding request for personal protective equipment for volunteer first responders, which is intended to outfit new volunteer members. This budget reflects a recent contract agreement between the town and the fire union that includes two years of general wage increases, along with salary adjustments for EMTs and ambulance transport division. Most of the increase you see in the operating budget is attributed to this new contract. The remainder of the operating is for the general increases, which includes the four proposed firefighter positions. As your Fire and Emergency Services Administrators, we annually review the cost to the town for fire and emergency services by comparing per capita cost with other similar communities for these services. With that information, we're able to determine what we can continue to deliver these services at or below the per capita cost of those communities while offering and delivering critical, vital, value-added services that would paramedics and with our own ambulance transport services. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to make my opening statement. I'm prepared to take any questions from the council.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Laffin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming. Good summary. It kind of cleared up, actually, some of my questions. I think the staffing increases are, as we've talked about, are probably -- are not probably, they are necessary to kind of readjust where we were going and help with the overtime issues. The fire marshal position is still unfilled, and then that will be filled? Is because that was my?
From what I understand, we have a TA with a contract, but the contract is not signed. And I believe that there's a job description issue with the fire marshal that still has to be discussed between the town and the bargaining unit. So, I do have a request to fill the fire marshal, but they've been not able to do the test yet until they get the job description ironed out.
Okay. Okay, so the plan is it's going to be filled anyway? It's not?
Absolutely. I have a request in to do that.
Okay. That's it from me right now.
Councilor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for that opening. I appreciate it. You answered all of my questions with regard to the vacancies. So, the ambulance, you did talk about the ambulance. So, the -- right now, we have essentially two full-time ambulances, correct?
That is correct.
And last year, we had talked about the potential of adding a third ambulance. Is that something that we envision in the?
We do envision that's one of our -- as I spoke about during my opening statement, we are continually looking at it. We're trying to get up to full staffing, up to our staffing that we're authorized for. We did have a couple of challenges, but we did do a salary adjustment for EMTs. I just ran a test or ran -- there was a posting for EMTs. We have several qualified candidates, according to HR, and we should be testing them in mid-May. That will give me an opportunity to hire and get up to my authorized strength and then, you know, hopefully go in that direction.
Okay, perfect. And on the -- so, I know you're increasing the staff of paramedic firemen. What's our staff look like now in terms of -- how many openings do we have?
I have three openings, and there'll be a fourth one probably in another week.
Okay, so it'll be nine then? Assuming that the budget passes as is, it'll be nine that you'll be looking?
That is correct.
Okay. How long do you think it would take to hire? I mean, I guess the training would depend on whether they come to us already prepared, right? But?
It could take the balance of the remainder of the year. I do have a candidate that I should be interviewing another week. That's pretty promising, and there's two more candidates that are firefighter paramedics that I may be able to interview in another month, meaning they're finishing up paramedic school.
Okay, perfect. And then my only other question is, so I noticed the volunteer tax abatement. The money expended through January was $26,000, but this is something that gets paid once a year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so that -- so then, it went up $5,000 between '22 to '23, and then we're adding an additional -- we're budgeting another $47.50. Is that -- do we anticipate more volunteers, or can you get?
Well, last year, there was a statute, there was an ability where they increased, where the town can increase their tax abatement from $1,500 to $2,000 per year for the maximum. So, I'm anticipating that.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I know I ask you a lot of questions about this stuff, Chief, but?
No, that's fine.
My friends and neighbors are very happy with the service you provide, so I do appreciate, you know, your effort in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Testa.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm probably asking questions that you may have already answered, but I just want to be clear.
No worries.
I'm not going to pull any punches. You know, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of concern expressed in the last couple of years about the structure of coverage. Trying to word it in a way that shows I understand it. We made some changes with the decision to hire more EMTs, and there's been some criticism of that. However, it goes. I know there was a problem hiring EMTs, and hopefully that will be solved with more reasonable salaries and then a new contract. But one thing that pops up a lot is the idea that, or the reality, that fire firefighters, paramedics are on call or have to be around working extremely long shifts to be available. So, do you -- so, my question is very simple, because my only concern is that you are staffed to the level you need to be to provide the level of service that we've come to expect from you, which is the best. And I'm not stroking you. That's Wallingford. Wallingford Emergency Services are at the top of the list, and it's taken a long time to get there, and we got there, and we are there. I was a little concerned over the last few years that the issue of money caused changes, and maybe I was mistaken. So, all I want to know is that does this budget provide you with sufficient funding to get the staffing up to the level where you need to be so that our -- we have sufficient ambulance coverage, fire coverage, we're not holding people for 36 hours in case we need them, and so on?
Yes, it does. And we will continue to adapt to the needs of the community. But this budget does reflect what I believe we need in order to provide the service to the community that they need and they've come to expect and deserve.
Okay. And I know I missed the number -- I heard the number four, then I heard the number nine. Are we -- we're hiring to pick up currently open positions? And then the budget, open positions?
That's correct. Yes. It'll be about eight open positions. I'll get -- I am looking to put on four additional, and I have.
Got it.
I'll have four openings as of next week on the fire rescue division. So, that's a total of eight.
So, you have -- you'll have what you feel you need?
Yes, in this budget, yes, sir.
This is really the only time we can really ask this.
Yep.
You know, we can bring you in here during the year and talk about things, but that gets sensitive sometimes. It's budget time. And I know you're sitting in front of the guy that signs your budget and you report to, but this is the only time we can ask.
Absolutely. I understand that.
Is the money, the money you need in the budget, and it sounds like you feel comfortable that it is?
Yes. It's what I asked for.
All right.
And that's what I'm getting.
And as a side note, does it appear you might have opportunities to fill some of these positions from the volunteer ranks?
Yes. I'm looking forward to having a firefighter EMT test also, along with a firefighter paramedic to provide some opportunities.
Okay. Because that's another thing that I -- another area where I feel we are, you know, we are so uniquely blessed in town, that we have the combined services that have always worked well together and have always been there. And I appreciate the fact that changes were made over the last few years to adjust the reimbursement levels to the volunteers for their training, and obviously, all that we're doing to the tax incentives and the putting them into the pension, that's all going well. So, all right, that's really all I really cared about. I want to make sure you have what you need, and hopefully, we'll get to the point where everybody's operating, to the point where they're comfortable, and stop hearing all the complaints. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Questions, comments from the public? There being none, gentlemen, you're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You can just remind us who you are for the record.
For your record, Rob Boltramides, Public Works Director.
Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer.
Mr. Boltramides, thank you for coming back after I dismissed you.
Well, you know, you told me not to run, and it was actually bad advice.
The one time in my life that somebody listened to me.
First time I got listened to.
Yeah. Councilor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so sorry to make you stay, because I don't think this question is probably for either of you. So, I apologize. I have a question. Maybe this is for the comptroller. So, there's $1 million sitting in the Cap'n Non that was the Transfer to Community Pool Capital Projects Fund. We haven't spent it, obviously, and I'm just, I'm wondering what happens. I think because of the years that the budget goes, we won't see that again in next year's budget, because it'll timeout. So, where will that show in the future? I just don't want future councils to forget that that money's sitting there.
I don't have that answer for you right now, but I can get it over to Mr. Senna tomorrow morning, and we can get back to you.
I appreciate that. Or I don't know if anybody else knows, or we should just wait for Mr. Senna? Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, like I said, that doesn't get just kind of lost in the shuffle. So, at least that when we see it every year, we know it's still sitting there. That was my only question. So, again, I'm so sorry that you two had to stay. Thank you.
Councilor Testa.
Hello. Okay, I know we have an ongoing multi-year plan for sidewalk installation and replacement, and that's funded out of this Cap'n Non recurring fund. That's the sidewalk installation program that is done based on your mapping out of the zones and all, and that's great. Do you have some type of analysis or idea of what it would take to repair all the sidewalks, where there are these, you know, obnoxious asphalt repairs and bumps and yada, yada, yada? I can't believe I just said yada, yada, yada. I apologize.
We haven't done an analysis to see what that would take. It's really much more easier to choose, I guess. You know, if we take it in our zone-by-zone approach, we feel like that's much more thorough. And when we do it that way, we get to do a full inspection of the street where there are trips reported, but maybe we catch some other ones that weren't reported.
Right.
So, we do feel like it's the most thorough way about this. Yeah.
Is there, I mean, is there a log of problem areas that have been reported?
Yes.
There is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that in your office or Public Works?
Engineering.
All right. So, when I've something, I find an area and I call it in, or, and as we'll soon find out, maybe our new committee will point things out, you'll, you do, so in effect, you do have that, the analysis I'm talking about, based on what's been reported. You haven't walked every sidewalk, and I understand that. But when people say there's a problem and we're, they're, they were told, "Well, you know, that zone is three years out, but we know about it. So, perhaps, Rob, your department goes and does a temporary patch."
Mr. Chairman.
That's kind of how it works, right?
So?
Maybe I can help a little bit. By state law, once we have notice of a defect, be it in a road or a sidewalk, we have a duty to respond within a reasonable time. Upon notice of a sidewalk defect, that there's a trip -- well, first, we receive the notice, then someone from engineering goes out and determines, is this a tripping hazard or not? If it is, then it's scheduled for emergency repair, which is not Public Works. They have a contractor who would go out and do the emergency repair. The emergency repair, then, is maintained for the time necessary to reach that as a permanent repair, which with the zones, obviously, can be a significant period of time. Your earlier question about if we did all the sidewalks at one time, we're spending $200,000 to $300,000 a year. So, if we tried to do all of them, and I think it would be a logistical nightmare, we'd have sidewalks and highways disadvantaged with the repairs going on all over town. But I'd have to guess it's in the multi-millions of dollars.
Absolutely, yeah.
In order to do all of them at one time. And again, a logistical nightmare as far as the public being able to use the sidewalks and potentially disruption of traffic as well. But we are spending $200,000 to $300,000 a year in putting in new sidewalks. That is not the money for the temporary repairs. Is that correct?
We use the same account for both.
Same account? Okay. But it's a fraction of it that goes for a temporary repair?
Yeah, the bulk of that account is absolutely for new sidewalks, which are expensive.
I appreciate that. I understand it. Didn't answer my questions, but I appreciate that. But the mayor did bring up, he did say, "An emergency repair would not be a patch repair." Clarify that, please.
I think it may have been meant as temporary repair. So, we?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we get the report. If we determine it is a tripp hazard, then we send it out and hope the work is done quickly.
So, there's not necessarily a program where if we are made aware of a hazard, that sidewalk is completely repaired and replaced?
It can happen in a very infrequent situation. So, for example, this past year, Fox Run Drive had multiple layers of bituminous, and it would have been responsible to put another layer. The risk manager did weigh in and, you know, advised us that
The risk manager did weigh in and, and, you know, advised us that a permanent repair would, permanent replacement, sorry, would be the best solution there. So it was, it was a one-off. It's definitely not the, the typical, and there were also, it was a problem area for, since I started, so...
Right. And what, what budget does that come out of? This, if that's done, where you said Fox Run, when that was done, how was that paid for? Out of, was it your annual replacement budget, or was it out of some other budget?
I, I believe it was the annual replacement budget, but I would like to confirm, and I could let you know if it's anything different.
Okay. And I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we are violating any laws. I mean, clearly, if, if a hazard is reported, we respond to it because the law requires it. My, the point I'm making is it is normally, and almost always, a temporary patch solution until that stretch is in the zone done that year. And again, that program is a good one. It's a prudent use of capital funds because it's planned, okay? But what I, where I feel we're falling short is all of those patches that aren't in the current zone drag on until we get to them. And I think we need to find a way to get to those more quickly and more effectively. And that's not to suggest we repair all the sidewalks in town all at once. It's, can, how do we affect those repairs? And that's why I asked not long ago, when there was an opportunity to apply for grants, infrastructure grants, somebody determined that they couldn't be used for sidewalk repair. And I don't accept that answer, but it's too late now anyway. I just feel like there is, or there are multiple opportunities to secure federal and/or state infrastructure grants to repair more sidewalks than we currently are, and I don't feel like we're going after them. And the, the answers I get from the administration seem, always revolve around, "It would be a logistical nightmare to do that." It could, it's like, it's from one extreme to the other. Do nothing, or, I'm not suggesting we immediately repair every sidewalk in town tomorrow. That could be logistically difficult. It also doesn't have to be done by your department, or your department. If we receive the money, we have contractors we can hire to do this. I'm just looking for a more proactive approach to repairing more sidewalks more quickly than we are now. And that's why I'm asking these questions. I want to make sure I understand the, the current MO and what's standing in the way of doing it differently, and, and that's, and that's fine. I'm, I'm okay now. And I do want to compliment you both on the job you're, you're both doing. You're doing a tremendous job in both of your, your, your positions. We're very fortunate, and I, none of what I'm saying is in any way criticism of what you're doing. Thank you.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you both. Thank you for being here, and I'll be quick. You know, I, I've talked about the same issue to you, Allison, in the past, I think last year's budget session as well, and I agree with Counselor Testa. I think the both of you are doing a tremendous job. I hear nothing but great praise about both of, of your work, and the two of you have been so responsive and helpful to, to me when I've had questions and constituent issues. You know, my, my big thing, well, I guess, let me first ask, remind me, how, do we do one zone a year or multiple zones a year? How long does it take to get through each zone?
It, I, this is, it depends on how big the zone is, how much sidewalk there is, and how many repairs are needed.
Sure.
So we're in Zone 12 right now. I believe this will complete our second full year in Zone 12. We're not quite done yet.
And also remind me, how, how many zones are there in town?
13.
13, okay. And the center of town, downtown, is, is Zone 1 or...
Yeah, I think it's kind of broken up, one through four, but it's the lower numbers, I believe.
Yeah, and so I, I think I've said this to you before, and this is my big thing, is, you know, I, I think we should make an exception for the center of town, downtown area, you know, where there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic, you know, it's, it's a center of commerce. We, we want it to be an attractive place for people to walk, and I think, you know, we, we have some of the bituminous patches on, on Center Street, around Center Street Cemetery, on North Main Street, and really, I just, I find this, and again, it's, it's not against you, I just find it's, it's unacceptable that we have the situation in our downtown area. This is the heart of our town, and, and I think we need to make an exception for the center of town. And I know it's not necessarily your decision, but I, you know, I think, you know, it's something that this council should look at at some point, maybe at ordinance or, you know, in some other way, but I, I think this is something that we need to address. I know that you have an aggressive program and do a great, a great job with sidewalks, but I, I think there needs to be an exception for our center of town, and I think, you know, this not, is not necessarily a budget item at this moment, but I think it's more of a policy issue that this council needs to address. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, so just for, for the people that haven't been on the council for long, so there's 13 zones. How many, how long does it take us to get through all 13? And I, I think it was represented before that we've never gotten through the whole list, correct?
Yeah, so...
And this program's been in place for how long?
I'm going to answer it this way.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So it's Allison's department that oversees it, but as you know, before I went over to Public Works, almost four years ago, I was with engineering for about 20 years. We were already in Zone 6 when I went there 20 years ago, and as Allison mentioned, they're just finishing up Zone 12 now and then going to Zone 13. There is good news. Zone 13 is like, I think where my neighborhood is, like the northeast section of town, there's very little sidewalks, a lot of it's newer, probably go through 13 relatively quickly, and then back to the, you know, beginning areas of downtown, 1 through 4. I think what the philosophy always was is that once you could go through all 13 zones, every time you go back through the zone program, it would be faster and faster because you would be dealing with less in, in each zone. But I, I guess that's a, a long way to answer and say that it's been over 20 years and we're not through all 13 zones.
I mean, the life of concrete is like 50 years under perfect conditions, right?
Sure.
So in a neighborhood, like, you're, you're not going to get that much. But, so to Sam's point, I guess my point is just, you know, perhaps, there's, and obviously not in this budget, so I think the two of you are doing a great job. Let me preface my comments with that. However, you know, there's probably a time when we should look at this whole zone program, and maybe a 30-year maintenance program is not the, you know, the optimal program. But thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the public? Thank you both for sticking around.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
And that's all the business we have tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.